Board of Education, order. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Nattari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Trubalberg.
Present.
Mayor Melhan.
Here, Sunshine House.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, notice of this meeting was published on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022 additions available times in Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice.
Hold on, hold on. My computer. Got it.
You later.
Just making sure he was awake. Sorry about that.
A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted off the available town hall bulletin board and copies aren't filed in municipal clerk's office.
Plaid allegiance.
So I'd like to welcome everybody to our first meeting of June. Being at the first meeting in June, it is our combined conference and regular meeting. As always, this happens the first meeting of the month. Any council member and/or member of the administration or any of our professionals can put anything on the agenda for discussion. Here you'll see that the manager, town attorney, and councilmember Cosarelli have placed items on the agenda for discussion. Unfortunately, you're here as the audience to witness and to listen to our discussions. You cannot participate directly in these discussions. However, if you do hear something that you're curious about or if you have a question about, you most certainly can bring that up during the public commenting portion of the meeting. So it's a little awkward whereby you listen to us all discuss things. But again, if you do hear something, please make sure you do mention it during the public commenting portion. So without further ado, I'm going to hand over to township manager Iacono for discussion on short-term rentals. Excuse my bad.
So, members of council, I think it was councilman Nattari asked me to do a little research and take a look at what some of our surrounding communities are doing. Basically, there's Airbnb, V-Bro, those are the two most popular sites. And unfortunately, in some cases, people actually just rent out room under these, so you can have a complete house. And then people are renting rooms, which obviously creates transient traffic. And obviously, polies or there's a domino effect into some public safety concerns, especially when there's, you know, people coming and going, you don't know your neighbors, things like that. So obviously, it is a serious concern that we may want to address with our own municipal ordinance. And again, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the ones that we passed out in previous meetings, but it would be my suggestion that I prepare a draft and I'll comment, you know, and I'll take a little bit of all of the ones that we already received, put together a draft, send it out to the council to see what you like, what you don't like, and then it'd be a little project in the working, so to speak. And I guess, I know time is of the essence, so we have to, we have to.
How many Airbnbs do we have?
So it fluctuates because you could go online and, you know, so you could go on today and there could be 17 today, go back two days and now there could be 37. So at one point I did check and they were over. I was surprised because I think I haven't checked in a while. Last year when I checked, I couldn't find any. And I said, wow, nobody wants to come to Bellville. And when councilman Nattari reported the concern, the next day I went on Airbnb and they were close to 30. So you must have heard about Bellville's a hot community, right?
And the regulations.
So, but there has to be some concerns because we have to be able to address some of the concerns.
So you're going to do a draft. I will have a draft. I know that North Valton did something, but are you going to take into consideration our thoughts on it or?
Well, that's a come, I figured I'll send out the first draft. Everybody can mock it up, send it back, and then I could.
Because a lot of this has to do with leasing. I mean, we have illegal apartments available that we can't seem to do anything about. So we're now taking on more responsibility to, if we do that, yeah.
Where did you say? Bluefield, I think you said something.
I know North Valton did.
He did something.
Yeah, it's most likely around Bluefield. Claire did.
The ones that I gave you, I think, were Bluefield, Montclair? I don't know. Bluefield had one and they're changing it. They had one that it was limited to 30 days, I believe. That was two, they determined that was too onerous and now they're changing it, having to change the gap process, changing it to allow shorter term but with other conditions.
Keys, you don't want one day. You don't want one day.
Well, Bluefield found, just so, you know, Bluefield found is you had, what they were shutting out were like visiting nurses, you know, that were going to work at Clammer Moss. They kept visiting nurses and visiting nurses would like to go to Airbnbs or cheaper than hotels and more like a home. So they got complaints or reports that things like, you know, visiting nurses couldn't use an Airbnb, so they are trying to find a middle ground. That's all.
Okay.
Yeah, a simple registration where they can register with the town, yearly inspection, something like that, you know, for the fire department.
Leasing that and monitoring that is the problem.
Absolutely, I know.
That is correct. It can double, become a job for somebody and just.
But it's probably an ender, never-ending document. It's always going to end, correct?
Yeah, you've got to start somewhere.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so how about this? If anybody's got any specific thoughts or language or considerations, just get that to the manager so he can incorporate that into his draft.
I will have a draft prior to the next meeting.
Okay, next up is township attorney Martino.
Very quickly, I, for some reason, I can get these. I got two requests. There's two township-owned properties. I believe they were actually both taken by tax foreclosure, one of which is on Ralph Street, happens to be next to the house that the town's going to end up knocking down. But it's an undersized lot. Somebody had required about purchasing it. As everybody knows, if it's an undersized lot, it has to be offers to abiding property owners to get an appraisal and the abiding property owner has to, if somebody wants it, they have to pay the appraised value. The appraisal is paid for by the purchaser as well. The other property is on Railroad Place, which is around Greylock Avenue. It's actually, I guess, Lorenzo did advise you that to build a lot because of the zone it's in. So I just want to get everybody's okay to go out and get appraisals so that we can then proceed to sell these properties. Now, we've got a third one, but thanks to Mark, it's a property that the township actually uses for storage and stuff. Somebody wanted to buy it, we're not going to propose to sell that one.
Is there anything useful to that storage?
I don't know about that. But there are two properties that aren't being utilized.
I want to understand the question.
You wouldn't even know that those properties existed, that they were grown with, you know, with the trees and things, so to get it back on the tax rolls. So I think it's a win-win, but I can't do that. So I assume everybody would like for me to go out and get appraisals and then go. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, next up, councillor Cosarelli.
Yeah, mayor, thank you. I have on here park rangers. I know we discussed this a couple of meetings ago, but I did get a bunch of pictures and phone calls over the weekend from kids on our new turf field on bikes. So I know that's not good for the turf. So I know our manager did have a discussion with Dr. Toppo. So I don't know, maybe you want to bring that up and so everyone knows what we're talking about.
Yeah, so we came up with the title as a park ranger. We actually put an ad on our municipal website looking for, we call them park guards, park gates. And unfortunately, we didn't get a big turnout as far as applications, so to speak. So Board of Education has a, for better words, a security detail. They actually have a vehicle assigned. And right now, it goes back and forth between the school property over at school number seven, eight, sorry, eight, seven, and high school. Dr. Toppo and I said, again, as part of a shared service, we would give him two or three of our pressure points on the Fairway Park, obviously, high school field, Fairway, high school field, maybe even after S. We could even campfire block.
And number nine school after we complete that.
Number nine, yeah. And number nine. So because they do have a vehicle. And again, you know, there's police enforcement and that's if somebody sees something, say something. So if we have what we call a park ranger, a park gate, or a park guard, and they see somebody doing something that they shouldn't be, they can always ask nicely. And certainly, if there's any resistance, all they would do is they would just notify our police department. Maybe we have somebody walking a dog on the track, we ask them nicely and they basically ignore us. And again, it's just, it's a 24/7 problem because you have to have somebody there all the time. But it's something that we have to address.
But before we do that, don't we have to put some rules and regulations in place? Something that we can agree on?
There are a bunch in place already.
So what councillor really was referring to is just the basics. No dogs, no bikes, things like that. What we need to do is we still need to come in and incorporate what kind of usage we want for the new fields. Because councillor Graziano has pointed out several times, people from all over come and are playing soccer or playing football or playing on the field, and we don't have a permit process in place. And again, this is not about making money, this is just about, you know, keeping the fields nice, having some control over them. So if somebody wants to use a field, an organization, they can come out and take out a permit. But we don't have that in place now. We do not.
We don't have permit capability?
Right now.
I thought we did.
Right now, it's, you know, if somebody comes in and says, hey, can we use the field Tuesday night at 7:00?
Can you maybe direct, wouldn't that be the rect department?
Sure.
Let's top this with the same fervor as we are Airbnbs, since we're going to have a draft or something by next council meeting.
Sure.
I mean, I can't imagine that we've been doing this for this long with recreational facilities and we don't have any process in place, but maybe they can review the rules, give them to us, and then we could maybe make a decision.
We have an ordinance that prohibits certain things.
Everything, right? You can't laugh, you can't sneeze, you can't fly a kite, I mean, you can't do anything. It's all written in caps.
And I know the Board of Education has a policy in place where they can rent out their fields and they have a process they go through, they have hierarchy of who gets it first, meaning, you know, town's first, kids first, times, and then anybody outside that has travel aid or something like that, they slide in based on.
If it's nighttime, there should be a lot more money for the lights.
Correct. And they already have a documented process out, so I don't know if you want to go.
Can we do all three? Can we do the ranger stuff? Can we do the rules? And can we do the rentals?
Yep. I believe we had a permitting ordinance in place. That when we would rent these things out, we would charge based upon that ordinance how much.
Or they could review that.
We should take a look at that. Do we pull it or?
I don't, I don't believe we have an ordinance in place that actually lines these.
I guess we'll, unless we pull it back. We have, we had done it with football.
Kelly said, Kelly said we may have a, I'm sorry, I don't want to speak to you.
Football field, I remember us doing something. Yeah. Football field, I remember.
We require a.
Right, because we had to get those guys coming in. The big guys, they were, they were basically, we're getting like 500,000.
No, you are right, there is one. Yeah, there is one.
But we need to cover all the fields. We need to cover, you know, you have, you have the high school varsity field, baseball, you have the two football fields or soccer fields, and then the JV field, so, and the track, you have all of that.
We have to differentiate between those that are green acres and those aren't.
Right, right.
It's not fun. Next item, report of the manager.
Good evening. I'd like to start off my report first by welcoming our newest member to the available township team. In the front row, we have Karen Matiras. Karen comes to us with years of experience working in the bank, she has great customer service skills, which is certainly helpful in town hall, and she'll be working directly out of the mayor and council's office. So it just makes life a lot easier for members of the council if they need something, if they have to keep track of calendars, things of that nature. It would be a very useful resource. But certainly for members of the public, if you call the mayor's office, you'll hear a new voice, and that would be Karen. On our agenda, on our agenda tonight, just some quick summaries and I want to spend a little bit of time on the lead line replacement program. But we also have a $125,000 public hearing. That's on the, it says water utility. Just so you understand that, that's our meter reader tower. That's, without that, we wouldn't be able to get the water bills out. And this is a, it's actually, there's actually two towers and we're able to drive up and down the street without even getting out of the car to get water meter readers. And it was obviously very essential because without a proper working meter reader tower, we wouldn't be able to get water bills out. I just wanted to give you, everybody a heads up on that. Also, public hearing tonight, also on a lead line replacement program. This is a mandate from the state. We would have been able to identify 5,500 homes may have lead lines that have to be replaced. First mandate, which is what we consider phase one, we have to do 7% of roughly 400 homes. So we're putting $5 million in place, all right, to cover those $4 million homes. There is a very, very good possibility that through the infrastructure bank, New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, that we can get reimbursed 75% of that. So I know Tom is putting all together the paperwork necessary to apply for the reimbursement. So we could, on the first 400 homes, which is roughly $5 million, we could be getting 75% of that reimbursed. So that would be helpful. We think that will probably start this project probably by the end of the summer. So we're pretty confident that the bid spec is now done. We have a bid date to receive bids. And, you know, long term, just so that we all understand how serious this is, the state has given out a mandate, and again, this is not just Bellville, this is the entire state of Jersey, by 2032, so at least about 10 years away, that all 5,500 lead lines, homes would have to be replaced. So we'll continue to work on funding for that project, but I know that's on the agenda tonight representing $5 million. Resolution number four, folks, about 2023 application for DOT. We're talking Portland, Williams, and Mill Street. This is separate than the 17 streets that were receiving bids. I believe in two weeks, we'll be seeing bids on 17 streets. So we're going to move and work as quickly as possible to get this all done, hopefully by November. So between, say, July and November, we're hoping to replace, or I should say refurbish 17 streets. I have that list and it's, I can furnish it. And I think that's it for my, my report certainly always open and ready for questions.
Any questions for the manager?
I do, yeah. So when we do the lead line replacement, that's the street, of course, right?
That's from the curb into the house.
Oh, into the house.
Right.
Not the street.
From the curb into the house.
This is the services that are really lead lines.
It's the, what's going into your, possibly into your house, right? That's like when you, that's like when there was warnings, run your water.
You know, I got that. I'm just, in the process in my head, what are they going to be?
I actually believe it's the house to the center of the street. That's not to the curb.
So if it's to the center of the street, that's where I was going, if, I guess it's going to be coordinated if ESG is coming in, I'm assuming that's all going to be taken into consideration.
So it's safe to say that 17 streets that we're refurbishing this year, between now and, say, November, are not streets that are going to be lead line replacement?
That's great.
That would make sense.
Okay, just asking.
So we always, the question, always, always hold your breath, we give you the answer.
Can you maybe give us an update on, the town attorney was just telling me, and I've seen it every day, the condition of Greylock Avenue, I'm told is stopped.
Yeah, so it was damned if we do and damned if we don't. The reason, we got to make a decision. If we do the repaving part of the street, which could take up to three days because of the entire length, during school, it would be, it would have an impact on like three different schools, people, our parents coming and going. And again, can't, can't just do it, say, between, say, 10 and 2. It doesn't work out. So we made a decision to wait and we're scheduled to do it the day after school. Because it just, it would have been, it really would have been very troublesome for parents to drive their children to school. It would have been a whole time. So I know it's not the best recommendation and you get some flat tires ordered.
That's about 10 days.
Okay, two flat tires.
Yeah, that, that street is dangerous. You got to really be careful on that street because last Sunday night, I was coming home around 7:00 at night, I was going slow, very slow.
It was a tough decision to make and.
Why didn't they tear it up before school? Why tear it up then before school ends?
Because again, I don't think, I think when they did that, I, the contractor was under the impression that he was going to be able to close down the street and pile that. Just when they start doing it, and I think that was, there was a question before by the engineer.
So anyways, going down that street last Sunday night, very slow, trying to maneuver myself around the manholes, and I got two blowouts.
Great.
Hey, Justin, I have a question for the manager.
Sure.
We've had a brief conversation about this. So yesterday, June 13th, I received a letter from the DCA addressed to me, telling me that as of the date of this letter, which was Monday yesterday, the township had not introduced a 2022 budget. And then they go forward and threaten, they order us to do it, and they threaten us individually as council people with fines. I know for a fact that we did introduce the budget. Can you explain why we have, or why I received the letter saying that?
Was it addressed to you?
Yes, Honorable Michael Melhan, mayor.
I probably came from you, but, so, yeah, so little breakdown in communication between us being the council adopted, or sorry, council introduced the budget. Under, what was supposed to happen was the budget was supposed to be sent down. It's a software program that Department of Community prepares, provides us, it's called FAST, it's an F-A-S-T system. You go on and you download it. It was not downloaded and which created that letter. Since yesterday, the budget that we introduced has been downloaded, we are still scheduled to adopt on July, I'm sorry, I keep saying July, June 28th, thank you. And as, as obviously, nobody likes to get those letters, it was somewhat literally surprising. I think we, we moved as quick as possible once we realized that there was a mistake. Mistake was clearly made on our part. We take full responsibility for that mistake. But as to the contents of that letter, mayor and council, you sleep well tonight knowing that you're not going to go to jail.
Not for that.
I'm not going to have to bail you out because I purposely gave them your last name, not my last name. But I would bail you out. But, yeah, and again, unfortunately, that was a mistake. We take full responsibility for that mistake, reacted on it. That's all I can offer at this point.
Okay, next on the agenda is the report of the mayor. News. So my first topic is news, upcoming news. There's only going to be one meeting as always, only one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So we are going to have two meetings. There will be a second meeting in June, but keep in mind only one meeting in July, one meeting in August. Registration for fall 2022 sports is now up and it's all been posted on our website. Summer jobs for teens. We always do a great summer jobs program. You can work with DPW and maybe even in town hall. Those jobs are available, $12 an hour for teens. Summer camp registration is now open. Information is on our website. We were awarded $61,000 in clean communities grant money. That money always goes to great, great use. And actually, I had the opportunity to speak at the Clean Communities Conference, which I know our DPW director was also on, about 200 people there. Great opportunity and we basically received a little more money in that grant this year than we did last year. Past events, we had National Trails Day on Saturday, June 4th, always fun. We had Story with the Cop Thursday, I believe that was in the library, Thursday, June 2nd. We had several great Memorial Day ceremonies throughout the day on Monday, May 30th. Upcoming events, Thursday, June 23rd, Pizza with the Cop. That's going to be the first time. It's nice to see it happening in the evening. It's going to be at Algeris, 6 o'clock, Thursday, June 23rd, Pizza with a Cop. Friday, July 1st is our reorganization meeting. So I guess technically there are two meetings in July. The reorg is a formal meeting, July 1st, and then usually we do the middle of the month. Wednesday, July 13th is our blood drive. And Friday, by popular demand, Friday, July 15th, motor vehicles will have a mobile unit here. I know a lot of residents have been asking for that. I know Jatties have reached out to them directly. It's going to be at the senior center, information's on our website. Interestingly, they will be doing the real ID. So if you have to get a real ID, but it's only limited to either 12 or 15, you must register for that. The information's all on our website. Everything else, registration, renewals, all that great stuff, they'll be able to do. But the real IDs, for some reason, they only do 12 or 15 of them. And that's it for my report. Next up, if this is the first meeting in a month, is basic committee reports. We don't have any formal standard committees here. Any council member that has an interest or wants to jump in on any topic, they most certainly have the right to do so. We value that. So without further ado, I'll start with the deputy mayor, Deputy Mayor Ebeneh.
Nothing at this moment, thank you.
Councillor Robel.
Not at this time.
Councillor Cosarelli.
Yes, just one little announcement for the green team. We have our first farmer's market, which is this Saturday, June 18th, 9 to 3. Just want to touch on that real quick. It's not just fruits and vegetables, it's all homemade crafts and stuff that's all homemade and from local shops and people here and all in the surrounding towns. So it's not just fruits and vegetables. We have about 20.
Then there's, I think, right, Jack, about 20, so what day is that?
June 18th, which is this Saturday.
Not on the website. You have to get that on the website and on social media.
All right, we get it.
Get it.
So that's this Saturday from 9 to 3 at the high school.
That's it?
That's it.
Councillor Nattari. Councillor Graziano.
Yes, maybe I should have booked something after before, like open. Food for joy, huh? As you know, I do a lot of walking every night and I go on to GoPro, whatever that is, I'm a golf pilot, I should say. So do you think that we can put something together, just throwing it out there, to get ahead of the curve and instead of being reactive, we be a little proactive to where we send something with either a water bill or something to the residents by saying, hey, you know, we are responsible as homeowners, right? That the trees in the front get cut, this is cut, that's cut, just reminder. It's like, it's like a greeting thing, right? Nice. So instead of, our current department's doing a great job, instead of them going out and knocking on the door and saying, here, you know, give them a heads up and say, this is what we're doing. It has been ordered into place for God knows how long, but we want to keep it all, we want to keep it going forward, clean, and we want to involve everybody, but here, here's, this is a heads up. And we do a little, you know, get ahead of it, is what I'm saying. And people that moved into the town may not even know that the tree in front of their property is their responsibility. And oh, by the way, so is your sidewalk. And you haven't fixed these things. So instead of knocking on their door and saying, hey, here's a violation, let's get ahead of it a little bit and give them time to think about it. And not think about it, but react to it. I don't know.
We've talked about the welcome letter, we've talked, it just never seems to get done.
We got the folder, right? We got Karen, it's going to be one of the projects.
Okay.
I did check the website, Jackie and Benning. There is information on the website about the farmer's market, but only about the application.
Okay.
So we don't have a flyer promoting the fact that we can do that tomorrow or Karen can do it.
So that's all I wanted to bring to your attention, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, communications.
So that was approval minutes, ma'am.
Approval minutes.
We need a motion?
Yes.
Motion.
We have a motion made in seconds, approval minutes. I thought Kelly was going to read them, don't you read the title, that's what I was waiting for. That's all right. So we are, it's the combined conference and regular meeting, it's number 1421.
September 14th, 2021.
Need a motion.
Set move.
We have a motion, we have a second. Motion made in second, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Yes. Communications.
Name request received from Graves Baptist Church for permission to conduct a block party on Saturday, August 27th, from 1 to 9. B request received from the residents of Hill Street for permission to conduct a block party on Monday, July 4th, from 1 to 9. And communication received from the New Jersey League of Municipalities urging all municipalities to support Assembly Bill A-3804, Incentive Bill S-330, which increases the distribution to municipalities from the energy tax receipts, property tax relief fund.
So those first two communications, I guess, go to the police department for processing. C, I was reached out to by the League of Municipalities and asked to sign on to a letter with probably hundreds of mayors, and that I did so, and there is a resolution on tonight's agenda about this. Originally, this money was supposed to be delivered back to the hand of municipalities. As the state goes, they eventually started siphoning off more and more money for themselves and not giving it to municipalities. This is just urging the state to reconsider putting that money back, which was the original intent, to give relief to municipalities. Next slide, ordinances, ordinances for introduction.
Number one, an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinance in the Township of Bellevue, Chapter 8-2.9 Parking Time Limit on Certain Streets.
Motion for introduction, second.
We have a motion made in second for introduction. Clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Dependant.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melman.
Two, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 3641, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans to delete eight titles.
Mr. Manager, correct or wrong, this is yet another title that we're deleting?
Yes.
And I love the fact that word deleting is in the title. So nobody thinks that we're amending it to increase salaries or to add another position. This is yet another deletion of a title. Okay, motion to introduce.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to introduce, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Dependant.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jumelberg.
Yes.
Next, ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, bond, ordinance providing for the acquisition and installation of equipment for the water utility systems inhabited by the Township of Bellevue in the County of Massachusetts, New Jersey, appropriating $125,000. Therefore, authorizing issuance of $125,000 bonds or notes to the Township to finance the cost thereof.
Motion open for public. Second.
We have a motion made in second, open for public, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Dependant.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melman.
Yes. This is public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have anything else you want to talk about, you can most certainly do so during public commenting. This is just this ordinance. Mr. Frank Antoni, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Vincent Frank Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect. Thank Mr. Ayakono for explaining the way you're, I thought you explained it, there's a device that's going to be able to read the meters from the street.
Yeah, it's actually similar to a cell tower.
It's a radio tower, basically.
Okay. Well, what's the device that we already have installed on our homes that even missed the reading? We already have that.
Correct. So you're a meter at home that which has a transmitter. As we drive down the street, the tower, in better words.
They communicate.
And that's what, that's what relays, it relays to the tower, and the tower goes right into our computer. So we know how much water is used.
Is that something, no?
No, the 125, we're actually replacing the tower that is no longer working. And without a properly working tower, we couldn't get the tax bills out.
So now we're going to have to drive down the street to read the meters?
It's either that or to go to every house, door by door, that's it.
Well, all they do.
Mr. Manager, it's the same process. The one we have is broke, we're just replacing it. The process isn't changing at all. All right. This is what receives the signal and brings it back down, is what you're saying. All right.
Okay. Next question on this ordinance is it's $125,000. But you have a huge surplus in the water utility budget. So why are we going out to bond? You only, you got about a $4 million surplus. Why are we going out and borrowing $125,000?
So, so keeping with this particular ordinance, and when we have the public hearing on the budget, we can go into detail and display to you or exhibit to you that there is no surplus. But we can get that at the budget hearing, okay? For tonight's purposes, this $125,000 is the cost to replace the two meters that have been up and running. I can just tell you with 100% confidence that we do not have a surplus. And during the budget hearing, which is a public hearing for the budget, that would be a perfect question, and I'd be more than happy to give you the breakdown. We take in $8 million, and we actually, for the last time I checked, we think about $8 million.
So you must have printed a lot of that $8 million to pet projects, then, all right?
No, and we can discuss that at the public hearing for the budget.
Yeah, and that's how you gave us this phony $29,000.
Mr. Frank Antoni, I need you to stay on this ordinance about the 125.
Well, this is on the ordinance.
No, you're talking about the budget.
And I got, I got it over and for almost two weeks I haven't got an answer for some issues, you know. Part of, I think, is related to this budget. I haven't got an answer yet.
And you're a public.
So I need them before the budget hearing. So because every year, Mr. Ayakono never answers questions. I'll get back to you, never once in 30 something years has he ever gotten back to me.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Antoni, you can definitely speak about this.
So if I can get that information before the budget hearing and relate some of the surplus to there.
Absolutely. Anybody else on this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Now, notwithstanding your comments that the $125,000 is being used to buy meter reader towers, I'd like to know, why do you need to have a mobile reader? These devices should be able to communicate directly with cellphone towers that are all over the township. For example, your smartphone, you don't need to have somebody run by your house with a reader to be able to establish a contact. These devices that were mounted to our homes a few years ago so that you wouldn't have to have manual meter readers, why aren't they capable of directly contacting local cell towers? And to eliminate the need for two positions, two mobile reading towers altogether? Or would it, would it be, if that technology isn't in place, would it not make sense to look into incorporating that technology to eliminate two more positions that would really be unnecessary in this day and age in light of the existing technology? So just something I'd like the council to consider. I would appreciate some feedback there. To follow up on what Mr. Frank Antoni said about the, why we are bonding for what seems to be a relatively paltry amount of money, $125,000, when the total township operating budget is upwards of $80 million now, to borrow $125,000, and according to the bond ordinance, this is a 30-year term, even at 3.5% interest, that's going to cost an extra 80, almost $80,000. So you're actually incurring a debt of about 200, a little over $200,000 with this bond ordinance. When I see the township bonding for $125,000, it seems to intimate that you really do have serious financial problems. You know, what's next, a bond ordinance to procure paperclips and pencils? It just doesn't really speak well of the town's finances when you have to bond for such a relatively puny amount of money. Lastly, and while you said to wait, save these questions until the public hearing on the budget, the fact of the matter is that you guys did collect over $8 million from us in water bills last year. Mr. Ayakono first identified this.
In fact, I do need you to keep your comments on this bond.
I'm almost finished.
No, on the bond, you have to stay on the bond.
It is, it is.
Doesn't matter when you finish, it has to be on the bond.
According to your own financial records, which I opened a couple months ago, last year, you paid NORC less than $3.6 million for our water delivery. So to date, and I'm waiting with bated breath for your explanation of where that other $4.5 million went. You took in $8.025 million last year for our grossly inflated water bills. You paid NORC less than $3.6 million, and some of those payments were marked as back payments, which was part of that $1.6 million.
So I do need you to wrap up because you have to stay on this ordinance only.
I hope, if not tonight, on the 28th, when you have the public hearing, that you guys finally have a full explanation for where that other $4.5 million went. Because I could just have been waiting with my contacts
Thank you.
at the AG's office and elsewhere.
Thank you.
To have a pulse on you.
Because you're not on this ordinance anymore. Thank you. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only? Okay, need a motion to close.
Motion to close public. Say for final adoption.
Want to close a move? Close a move for final adoption? Motion made in second, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Dependant.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melman.
Yes. Or on number two?
Bond ordinance providing for Phase 1 of the lead service line replacement project inhabited by the Township of Bellevue in the County of Massachusetts, New Jersey, appropriating $5 million. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $5 million bonds or notes to the township to finance the cost thereof.
Motion open for public.
We have a motion made in second, open for public, clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Dependant.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melman.
Yes. Again, if you have questions on this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only, this would be your time to speak. Gross.
1295 Bell Street. Just a few questions on it. Is there, do we have an estimated idea with how much we're going to have to bond for the lead pipes? You know, is it 10 million, 11, 12 in the long run? Do you have any idea?
This one's for five.
This one's for five, okay. Now, if I'm correct, I mentioned this a while back. I think last year we bonded $3 million, so we should have a total of $8 million if I'm correct? Mr. Manager, I think you answered that question on me. It's $3 million from last year, so we have a total of $8 million for the lead pipes then, as of now. I remember asking you that question a couple months ago.
I had $3, I found the $3 million, I don't want to commit to it.
First batch was the 400 that the feds mandated us to a certain percentage.
Which is this?
I think this is the same one.
This is the same one.
Yeah, you're confusing me on the $3 million.
No, no, I remember an ordinance, as far as I can remember, that we bonded a $3 million bond for the lead pipes. You know, I'll give you a chance to research it, I'm not going to hold you to it, okay? So the way I'm reading it right now, we have $8 million, hopefully. And hopefully, the feds will reimburse us 75%, which brings me, like I said, now, there's another 25%. Are the taxpayers going to be obligated for that other 25%? Breaking down to what period of time, 10 years or something like that?
What's the term of the bond? It's usually, uh, 20, 30 usually. Yeah, I don't even know the terms on that.
You don't have to look it up right now, but all I'm saying is, I'm just trying to figure out. In other words, if the whole project's going to be $10 million, 75% is going to be reimbursed. And just trying to figure out what the tax, what the taxpayers are going to be on, even though you have to do it. But that's it.
Okay.
But you can get that information from me.
I get that.
Anybody else on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Mr. Frank Antoni.
I'm curious, you said that there have identified 5,500 lead lines. Who identified them?
Tom Harris.
How did he identify them?
He has a formula, I, you know, I know it has a lot to do with the age of the home. Homes built before a certain period. It's safe to assume that they do have lead lines. But he could give, I could give you the specific formula on how to, how we identify the 5,500.
You know, I want you council people to pay attention there, because this appears to be a fraud going on here. I got letters on my three properties in town that my properties have been identified as having lead lines. Well, I bought my laundry, set up a laundry mat, I had an inch and a half copper line put in years ago. I have a copper line in my house. So I know why I'm and others are talking to people around town getting the same letters. So how do you identify, there, right now, one person, there's three houses that don't have lead lines that they're telling me in writing that I have a lead line?
The, well, part of the challenge is, there's no exact science to be able to look at your property to say that you have a copper line, okay? So there's a formula to use, I'd be more than happy to share that formula with you tomorrow. Obviously, I have your email. I'll have Tom type it up and send it to you, you'll have it first thing in the morning. And that formula is a formula that has already been approved by the state of New Jersey. So I wish there was an exact science that we could be able to just go up to your home and say, okay, you have lead, you have copper. Doesn't work that way. So, but the point is, if you do have copper, your home is not going to have to be replaced.
Well, in all due respect, you know, you're talking about a process. I'm a contractor for 50 years. People call me, I go down a basement, see where the line comes through the foundation, and I can tell if it's copper or lead. So this is not rocket science. You know, you see it coming through the house. It's a copper line. It's visible, even if somebody renovates their bathroom, they have to keep the water meter parked up. You can't block in a water meter.
Mr. Manager, I have some question notes, because of Mr. Frank Antoni's point. I received a letter about lead line, and I don't have a lead line. So I think what they're doing is they're using a guesstimate based on year, but they're not cross-referencing that with, say, permits from construction code that would show that I pulled a permit to do that. So that's the first problem. The second problem is, any idea what it would cost to have a person, an employee, go to 9,000 houses available and check the lead lines?
No, I don't even think that was ever priced out.
Thank you.
It would be cost effective, it'd be a lot easier to send out a 32-cent stamp or whatever stamp is these days. And again, I think you're missing the objective and the goal there. The objective and the goal here, which is a mandate by the state of New Jersey, that we have to replace 400 lead lines. There's no question that we have more than 400 lead lines available. But the objective and the goal here is to be in total conformance with what we are required to do by law. So we will replace 400 lead line replacements. And then, I would suppose, or I'm pretty sure, there's going to be a second round, which would, they would be considered Phase 2, and there'll be another 400. And until we have roughly 10 years to replace every lead line available.
Oh, number one, through my experience, I doubt you got 5,500 lead lines.
Okay, I hope you're right. I hope it's only 30.
When I got, I have a friend in Silver Lake, when NORC did Silver Lake, somebody did go to everybody's home. NORC sent somebody to this person's home to look at to see if they got it. So when you tell me that it's impossible to send somebody, we used to have a mortar, mortar cleaners that used to go to everybody's house every quarter. So what's the big deal? So if you had four meters, we had only.
What's the big deal if you get a letter that says that you may have lead line and you don't have lead line? You spent 32 cents on the stamp, so what would be the?
Here's the problem, Mr. Ayakono.
Listen.
I've been involved in the government as an activist and all for 54 years. This appears to be just another scam to have a large amount of lead lines so they can justify exactly what's going on tonight, bonding huge amounts of money, and then finding, oh, we didn't have that many. And all of a sudden, that money that had been bonded goes for other things. I've been around too long, and I've seen too many things. And I've seen 130 elected officials in New Jersey go to jail for some of this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Antoni.
So, but something's got to be done, I mean, as council members. Send somebody out, we had three meter mates, three meter readers that would go through the whole town every quarter. So what's the big deal to send somebody out there? I would gladly spend some money, send somebody everybody's house. Not Tom Harris doing it in his office, oh, I think there's 5,500 lines because of the age of, my house was built on 3D, 1897. I don't have a lead line. My house was built in 1927. He's going like Mr. Ayakono said, oh, but he aged the house. He's going like Mr. Iaccone said, oh, but he aged the house. That's fraud. Let's actually find out how many we have. I'm gladly spending...
If anybody's interested in the answer here, but, Mr. Iaccone, the money we're bonding is only for 400. We're not bonding for 5,800. So, if there ends up not being 5,800, only 4,000 in the long term, we still have to bond this money for the first 400. And then there'll be less money bonded in the future, correct? Thank you.
That's the other thing, you know, you get a plumber to run your lead line for 1,500, $1,800. All of a sudden, the government comes up with all kinds of money to do the same line. And I was stopped in Home Depot checking out it, plumber said, you know, I do service lines with a helper in six, eight hours. How come I see Public Works standing there with a five, six truck and 11 men standing around?
Mr. Frantantonio, any more questions on this bond?
Yeah, I'm asking the seven councilmen to really find out how many lead lines. And again, I'm willing to spend my taxpayers' money to hire somebody to go door to door.
I'm willing to beg you, Mr. Frantantonio, that we have at least 400, and this bond is for 400.
Well, 400 is a long way from 5,500.
This bond is for 400. And that this bond is for 400.
Mayor? Can I ask a question, Mayor? So then, why, why don't we, how many homes are in Belvo?
Eight thousand units.
So, can we get a guesstimate on 8,000 homes to send somebody out there per hour, get that number, and with that number comes 50,000, 100,000, $200,000? And if they want to spend the money, then we bring it to the table here?
NORC's lead line replacement program cost 150 million, which is why they had the ability to send someone in.
That's my point, so the question is...
But this is only about 400, so let's just leave it at this one.
You check your permits first, you see who got, I took permits. So, you don't have a record that I put lead...
Any other questions, Frantantonio, about the bond?
I put a copper line in, you've got to check the, Tom Harris is not doing the job properly. So, let's find out what's actually, how many actual lead lines we have.
This bond is not about the total number, though, it's about 400. Anybody else?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Just as a continuation of what Mr. Frantantonio was arguing, I also received a letter about the lead line replacement. The line in my house was replaced back in the 1980s. I have a copper line, actually, I emailed Mr. Iaccone, Mr. Harris a few weeks ago saying that we need to at least make the correction with my home. I offered to let them come in if they want, or send them a photo if you wanted to have the corroboration.
On this bond, though, I need you to stay on this bond, 400 for $5 million.
What are you going to do, just show up one day at someone's house, start digging up, and said, oops, there is a copper line here, so sorry about that, we're going to...
I'm not going to, don't mean to interrupt, we have to just mute all of this, the six cell phone that's from so far. And this meeting, the sixth one. Does everybody please take a moment to mute your phones? Thank you.
Are you just going to err on the side of Mr. Harris' list?
No, I believe it's in conjunction with the road improvement program. So, as the road is already proved up, as Mr. Frantantonio has always advocated for, when the road is dug up to do resurfacing and paving, we look at the underlying infrastructure. If your house has a copper line, we're going to skip you and do one more person on that road.
So, the initial water line replacement's only going to occur on streets that are currently being renovated?
I believe so, that was the goal, so we do the underlying water infrastructure first.
That was part of the...
Plus, it's a cheaper price because the road is already dug up.
Well, that would, I'm glad to hear that much, because I just assume that you would just...
You can agree with us once in a while.
Well, I do occasionally, I know it's a rarity, but we have to go about this in a logical, rational sense.
We believe we are.
How much expense would it be, how much trouble? Would it be to send letters to those homes that are believed to have lead service lines, asking the homeowner, can you please verify this assessment? Meaning, it would give you a more accurate idea of how many lead lines are really in this township.
I don't believe my mother's going to know if she has a lead line or not. And I don't know if we would trust that data, that Mr. Frantantonio would be standing here saying, we had laypeople give us our data, as opposed to Tenor Gineer.
I think that a good number of residents in this township, you would at least be able to draw some statistical inferences.
But again, we're dealing with 400, so I can guarantee we have at least 400, and I can guarantee we're going to replace at least 400.
Well, I guess there'll be more discussion when it gets to that point, when we start actually replacing lines. But specifically for this bond ordinance, another $5 million, I'm very concerned about the rapidly growing amount of bonding that has taken place in this township in the last, less than a year and a half. Last year, you bonded for 22 million. Back in March, when you approved it in April, you bonded for another $27 million. You're now bonding for another $5 million here. And then tonight, you have a tan, the tax anticipation note for $7.5 million. Altogether, as of the conclusion of tonight's meeting, that's $61.5 million of bonds.
I do need you, you can talk about that later, I do need you to stay on this particular bond.
But, again, this is the loop back is, where is that extra money from last year's water bills? And at least I'm glad Mr. Iaccone mentioned the fact that he's hoping that upwards of 75% of this expense will be reimbursed. I took the time to visit the state's website. They have a very nice article about all the funding resources available to municipalities for this type of project. This is not an unfunded mandate, as some would argue. The state seems to have a copious amount of funding sources to help municipalities with this project. I assume you're all aware of this, but if not, later tonight, I'll be emailing and to allay Mr. Martino's fears. Now, you should respond to the email, and we're not to violate OPMA rules, but I want to make sure that you and Mr. Iaccone have the same information if it somehow has escaped your attention. The last page of this document has all of the funding resources available being provided by the state to help municipalities with service line replacements. So, check your email within the next several hours. By tomorrow, you'll have this information.
Anybody else in this ordinance, this ordinance only? If not, is there any motion to close and move for final adoption?
Motion.
A motion and second made to close and move for final adoption.
Councilmember Cosrelli.
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Presiana?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trumulbur?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes, at number three.
Number three is a public hearing, an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap date.
Motion open public, second.
We have a motion made in second, open public, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli.
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Presiana?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trumulbur?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only.
Yes, just my annual objection to this, because in 1976, when they passed the income tax law, we were supposed to control property taxes by the state imposing a cap. I believe this year, the cap's only 2%, 2.5% or something like that. But then, the clever politicians, people like you and Al, oh, yeah, we got a 2.5% cap, but if you want to increase it another 3.5%, go ahead and do it. So, it's a phony cap, and every year, I object to this. This is nothing but more corruption by public officials on every single level, local, county, and government. And this is so obvious. If you got a cap, it's a cap. Why give welcome in this town, the opportunity is expended? And all you do is raise our budget like crazy every year. So, I object to it. Hope some of you have a conscience enough to both know on this, but I don't know from past things, I don't think you have the coverage to do that.
Okay, our coverage is not part of this bond, thank you. Need a motion to close and move for final adoption?
Second.
Motion made in second to close and move for final adoption, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli. Tanya?
Yes.
Presiana?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trumulbur?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Or number four?
An ordinance to end Chapter 19, the codified ordinances of the township of Belvo.
Need a motion to open?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion made in second to open, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli. Tanya?
Yes.
Presiana?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trumulbur?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. We are open for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only. If you have something to say on this ordinance, please come forward.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. While I'm happy to see that the correct statutory language has been included in this ordinance under guise of Chapter 19, Subchapter 1, I still want to bring to the collective attention of the council that based on Mr. Cates's argument, his seven-page legal opinion, which I hope you've all had a chance to read since I first presented it to you back on April 12, Mr. Cates argued...
Do you have a question on this?
Yes, I do. It's about the legality of what you're about to do with this ordinance. Mr. Cates argued, as the preeminent expert municipal annuals law in New Jersey, that 19-1, for all intents and purposes, ceased to exist as of July of 1990.
We reintroduced it now, this is the second reading to reintroduce it, so it's been...
I don't see this as a reint... What you're doing is tweaking.
It's been rewritten.
You're continuing to tweak 19-1, which...
You seem to have an issue with the number 19 or the numeral 19. It's been rewritten by outside council, which is exactly what the planning board attorney directed us to do.
Fact remains that as of July of 1990, when the town switched from commissioner to council manager...
That has nothing to do with this ordinance. Do you have a specific question about this ordinance?
There was an ordinance, 2530, July of 1990, which rescinded 19-1.
That's not this ordinance. That's not this ordinance. This is a brand-new wording, a brand-new, we should have named it 27.1.
But, well, see, this is why, Mr. Cates said, that in order to make sure that everything is in good standing...
I think Mr. Cates should have come here then today to speak about that, because I need you to stay on this particular, do you have a question about any wording in this document?
As a case of all lawyers, his time is very expensive.
But tell us what your question is on this wording here.
As I said, as I started off, I'm glad that at long last, you have the correct statutory language for planning board appointment, that you have language now.
So, you support this?
Well, the writing of it, yes. I'm glad that you're finally honoring the municipal annuals law and the OCP Act dictates as in regard to how planning board members are to be appointed under a council manager form of government. But I think there still is an issue here that you continue to...
So, cite the sentence or the portion that you think is incorrect.
It's the basic legal law, can you modify an ordinance that ceased to exist in July of 1990?
Okay, that's your question?
It should have, I think...
It's on the record.
What Mr. Cates was essentially saying, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he said that you essentially needed to bring in a brand-new ordinance, to forget about any references to 19-1, to bring something, introduce a brand-new ordinance, and forget about this fraud of trying to resuscitate 19-1.
You are now on the record with that objection.
Right, well, thanks.
Thank you.
We move forward with this, but at least the right language is in place. And it's no longer your sole authority to appoint the planning board members, it's a collective responsibility of the entire council.
Thank you. Anybody else in this ordinance, this ordinance only? No, you're none?
Through the chair, just...
Close it out and then comment.
The de minimis change that I want us to approve. Okay, so, and this goes along with the language you were talking about. So, in ours, we're saying...
Just close public commenting, Steve, and then we can do have discussion.
We can make a de minimis change?
Yeah, we're not going to, yeah.
Okay, good.
Just do a motion to close public commenting.
Close public.
We have a motion made in second to close public, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli. Tanya?
Yes.
Presiana?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trumulbur?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes, discussion, clerk call the roll.
So, what I want to do is, and I believe this is a de minimis change, in class four, it says, on the class four, show, hold no other municipal office, but if you look back at the statute, it says position or employment. I just want to make that de minimis change.
Wait, can you give me, where are you?
So, on class four, under class four, see where it says, hold no other municipal office? I just think we should add position or employment, which is what the statute says.
With defined employment, though, you can have a job and be a clear...
Yeah, no, 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 you can't have a town job, municipal office, municipal position, or municipal employment. I'll pass it out, it's no problem.
Is that minor change?
I think it's the minimis.
Yeah, I would say it's minor.
Yeah, it's minor.
The intention is...
Yeah, so let's just give it clearer, so we're going to amend to show, hold no other municipal office, comma...
Municipal position or municipal employment.
But then, the ordinance then allows for exceptions to that.
Right.
That would still, those exceptions would still...
Those exceptions still stand, still stand.
Okay, so can we have a motion to approve as amended?
So, approve, second.
We have a motion made in second to approve as amended, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli.
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Presiana?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trumulbur?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, next item on our agenda, the public commenting, we need a motion to open public commenting.
A move.
We have a motion made in second to open public commenting, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrelli.
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Presiana?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trumulbur?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Now, open for public commenting, anybody has anything to say? Hopefully, you keep it to government business and not necessarily personal business, but come on up, stick your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes, sir.
Yes, how you doing, Michael Shapiro, 712 Geraldine Street, Belvo, New Jersey. I've been up here a few times, and I try to, I think you know my story. I was basically shaken down, whatever you want to say, back in 98, with Frank DiLorenzo, but I tried to talk with the guy, and he said, well, you know, I don't recall anything. You know, he doesn't want, and I want to argue with the guy, because you know what, he's holding a position, and he could do whatever he wants to be. So, going back 1998, when I bought my house, I have a recycling truck, which is almost like a landscaper's truck, and I have a property down on Two Main Avenue with the shake where I've been parking here for the last 25 years. But at nighttime, I worked nights, and from 9:00 to 6:00 in the morning, the Belvo Police Department would say, hey, listen, you got to get off the street, pull in your driveway. And I got almost one acre of property, and I would pull in my driveway for 24 years, no problems. I was helping out Charlie Hood, I had all these, John Jacob, I was helping out all the cops, everybody in town, nobody bothered me. And I basically, you know, kept my mouth shut, and I, you know, tried to make peace with Trank, you know, for 24 years. And then, all of a sudden, last month, actually, two months ago, Joe Bellom, he's a good front line, I cleaned out his building down in Newark, and I brought all this junk to my house, and all of a sudden, you know, he gets a court notice saying that, you know, a notice for me to clean up my property. So, he comes out, he says, Mike, listen, you got to clean up the property, and you got to move the, you know, move the truck, you know, they're complaining about commercial parking. And I said, Joe, listen, I park at nighttime down at the shake, I have a yard, but this is all his stuff. So, he said, well, listen, Mike, I parked in the back at the building apartment. I said, all right. So, next thing, you know, a month later, I got a ticket for truck parking, you know, truck parking. I'm like, 24 years, I went and talked to Frank, and he's like, well, you know, you got to plead guilty, you have to plead guilty. I said, listen, for 24 years, you know, Belvo Police Department tells me to pull into my driveway, you know? I mean, listen, you made a deal, you know, you're trying to shake me down. I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with you. You know, you're holding a position, you could do whatever he wants to me, he could screw me, whatever, you know, he could do whatever he wants to me. You know, he's shaking me down, whatever, but I don't have the money to give this guy. So, I'm in a position now, I got this parking ticket, I go on Zoom Court, and he doesn't pop up on, he has Nick DeAngelo, and he says, listen, you got to pay a $1,000 fine or up to $20,000. I'm like, what are you kidding me? You're telling me I got to plead guilty? After the Belvo Police Department tells me to pull in my own driveway? Now you want to shake me down for $1,000? And he still, I went up there to the building apartment, he's like, you have to plead guilty, you have to plead guilty, you know? And, you know, basically, I got a gun to my head. So, I'm asking the city council, you know, whatever you can do to help me, as far as that dumping, forget it. I'm not going to go anywhere with that dumping, I'm 27, my neighbor over there was dumping all that stuff over into my property, I'm not going to argue with that. And, you know, Louis Santos, so, but if you could help me out, you know, like at nighttime, because at nighttime, the Belvo Police Department tells me, hey, you got to get off the road, pull in your driveway. I got almost an acre of property, you know, I got, you know, plenty of land. So, for 24 years, I had no problems. All of a sudden, one month now, all of a sudden, he's coming after me because his cousin sold the house. So, I don't want to argue with him, and I want to try to make peace with everybody, you know? And I have a commercial spot down at the shake, I park there every night, every night, but, you know, I think we paying 17, almost 18,000 in taxes, I should have a right to pull in my driveway for a couple hours to eat, take a shower or whatever, and get back out on the road without getting a ticket. So, that's where I stand, if you can help me out with that, I would greatly appreciate it.
I know you've been here before.
Yeah, I've been here before. I appreciate Anthony, all of his help, whatever he can do for me.
I was just going to say that what...
I appreciate it, you know?
We can't do, and you got to let me speak.
Right, right.
You got to let me speak. We can't really do much for you, but I know for a fact, the manager has had a meeting with you and Mr. DiLorenzo.
Right, correct.
So, I'm sure what came out of that meeting...
Correct. But when I went on the Zoom, Frank wasn't on air, he had Nick DeAngelo on air, and he's telling me that you, you know, you're going to be fined a thousand dollars for parking. I'm like, "What are you, you know, what are you kidding me?" You know, I've been, I've been following a protocol from the Bellevue Police Department at nighttime, "Pull off the road and pull in to your driveway." And that's what I've been doing for twenty-four years. Now, all of a sudden, he wants to come after me. So, I'm looking for some kind of help, where, whatever, if I come in at nighttime for a couple hours and pull in my driveway, I don't get a ticket from the building department, or if I park out into the street for a couple hours. That's all I'm asking, for some kind of help, some kind of leavage. And like I said, I have a parking space down in Passaic. I've been parking here, you know, for the last, since nineteen eighty-nine, I've been parking there. So, that's all I'm asking, you know, and like I said, I'm always here to help everybody in the Bellevue, you know, Police Department, everybody, you know, whatever I can do to help you guys out, I greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Manager, I don't know what you could do in your capacity, but maybe another meeting, a mediation with the court. But yeah, I'm sure the manager will...
I appreciate whatever Anthony can do, you know what I mean? I really do appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Anthony, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and everybody in the city council, thank you.
Anybody else, public commenting?
Oh, real quick, I want to thank Jared Boslett. I want to thank Refurbia, and I want to thank Yashimi. I forgot, they do an excellent job at the court. I hope you guys give them a raise, they're going to work. I wish I had any to work for me in this room.
Violations are way down, there's no reason to... Mr. Frantantoni, see if you can top that.
Phyllis Frantantoni, I just want you to clarify something for me. You said something about the tree in front of your house, you're responsible for taking care of it.
Depends, most of the time, yes.
Okay.
We have certain streets that we go eight feet into the right of way.
All right, because they, the one on the curb, by the curb, you're not responsible for.
When you say "you," you mean the municipality or the homeowner?
Me, yeah.
The homeowner on the curb, yes.
Yes. Okay, because at one time, you were not allowed to touch those trees. Now, if you're going to do that, you had this ordinance back years ago that if you have a tree on your property in your backyard, I had to come to you for a permit to trim it. I think you'd better do away with it, because if I can do the tree on the curb, you're not going to tell me what to do with a tree in my backyard.
Agreed.
That's like infringing on my privacy.
To pay for another inspector.
Because, you know, that's absolutely nuts. But talking about with all these notices that went out about the lead pipes, a lot of people won't call Town Hall, and I have a lot of elderly, well, I'm... A lot of elderly neighbors, they come to me. What do we do? They were so upset, "Oh, I don't have the money, how am I going to pay for the lead this, lead that?" I says, "Check, tell them how to check it." I says, "When your plumber comes, let him check it, and you won't have to put, do anything." But they get so upset, and let me tell you, it ruins their day, a couple of days, for this letter that went out, because they didn't understand it. They thought that they had to replace these lead pipes. So, I think maybe if it was written a little more where it was clarified that it's something that the state is implementing, and you may not have a lead pipe in your house and stuff like that, could have clarified a little more in these people, could have restful of them.
I always say the letters we send out, including the water ones, are poorly written, and they're not, not only poorly written grammatically, I mean, they could be written a lot better educationally and letting people know.
For people to understand it. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, public commenting? Mr. Fleishman?
Fleishman, hey. It's only been twenty-five years. It hasn't thrown him yet. Good evening, Carmelo Fleishman, eight thirty-three, may I should first of all, congratulations to the re-elected mayor and council. Can we do something about the lovely roads with P S N G? It is not...
Probably not. We've tried.
Really? I mean, how can they, seriously, how can they do away with it?
I lived on Bernice Road, we paved it. A year later, they ripped it all up, and we asked them to coordinate with us, they won't. We're hoping, now, the manager mentioned before, that we coordinated with them with these seventeen streets we're about to do with the show.
Sorry. Seriously?
It's terrible.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Frantantoni?
Mr. Mayor, I want to go back to ordinance number two. You keep saying, you kept it up, saying that five minutes only for four hundred warlocks. A little math.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Over twelve thousand dollars? I never heard of it.
I just made a note...
I never heard of it.
I just made a note in my phone to ask the manager about that tomorrow morning.
This is outrageous. In fact, I got to find the R cut out when Newark did so, all Newark, been there?
About eight thousand?
No, it wasn't eight thousand. It was like eighteen hundred.
No, it was not.
For lining there. But this twelve thousand to run a twenty, a thirty-foot copper lining? This is outrageous. So, somebody's got to look at that, because that's absolutely wrong. And if you agree with me, let's see if we get an answer for next meeting. And before you move on this bottom ordinance...
There's a lot of engineering fees in that.
The other thing with these illegal apartments, it's like, remember in the last several months, whatever, I think the Police Department bought a license reader. Now, you drive down the street, you can read these plates? Well, I mean, just come down my street alone. He said, "Oh, these cars..." And we literally can no longer park, and I'm in the A-one residential, I'm paying the top residential taxes we have. Of the thirteen houses, we got four illegal apartments. Attics, basements, all kinds of cars. One's got five cars and three trucks, and all kinds of people. Who comes into a side entrance, who goes in the back in the basement, who goes in the side entrance and goes up to the attic and all that? I mean, you got to find out about this. Now, I actually made a flyer several years ago, remember? Big red letter, warning, to put in the tax bill, no cost. You send it out to tax bills, put this big warning. What happened? Yeah, you sent a warning, remember it? It was an inch and a half strip of paper.
It's actually half a page, I remember.
No, I saved it. It's an inch and a half, I'll bring it to the next meeting. It's an inch and a half by eight and a half with little plaque. You got to put a warning, and somebody's got to start being punished. The other thing, there's no parking. You got one, which I hate to say publicly to the chief here, but I've told him about a car Mount Prospect there that every single night parks across the sidewalk, from the street to his overhead garage door. That one of the ladies babysits for her daughter's twins. She has to go on the street to go around. It's day and night, and she's still there. Every night, you know? So, it's crazy, but we got all kinds...
I haven't been here tonight, I'm going to see a ticket tomorrow.
They block, they block driveways and everything.
I complained to the same staff.
They park against the sidewalk and all. So, we got to do something about these illegal apartments. You do press conferences all the time, Mr. Mayor. You do press releases, you do announcements on your website. I mean, you're crazy. Every day, you're doing stuff on there. Put this out there. Put this out there every day, "We're going to prosecute you." And it's not fair, because they're renting them, we pay more. They're paying taxes for one family house, but they got two or three apartments in there. We are paying more for garbage, we're paying more for waste disposal and all that, and treating our waters.
Mr. Frantantoni, I'm sure you know this, but you're here at the council, you have to submit these to the construction code department. They are the ones that go out and do this work. We don't, we don't do that.
Well, this is the time for a public hearing, where we press our council people to direct the employees.
I don't direct anybody. The Police Department scanner, Chief Germaine Wrong, do the scanners find illegal apartments, the plate scanners that you bought?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, but they can see all these out-of-town cars. They can see the registration on these cars with more people. Okay, yeah, it could be a visitor one night and two nights. When you see these people time after time, you know, with...
Construction code department, they can do all the investigations.
Well, that's the reason for open meeting, to come here.
That's also the reason for gun pilot and telephones and emails.
Or the town manager. I'm addressing the council and the town manager.
You haven't given a specific address.
I have given specific, I will not do it publicly, but I have given specific addresses, and they were caught.
Okay, thank you.
People were put out, a month later, they were back in, and they're still in there today. So, we got to crack down on it, because it's really hurting the township, all right? The arch streets are clogged with illegal cars and apartments, you know, all over town.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting? Mr. Bershio?
Jerry Bershio, eight Grove Street. I want to also congratulate the mayor and the council members who got re-elected. I have a very short two questions on two resolutions. And pardon my intelligence that I don't have on this. What in number fifteen is adopting a complete streets policy? What is that supposed to mean? And your next question? Oh, my next question is, what is seventeen? Deferring local school tax?
The manager, I know the second one, seventeen, we do that usually almost every year, but Mr. Manager? Use the microphone, please?
Yeah, that's just a requirement that DCA requires us to do, as far as, it's a deferment until all the tax bills are sent out, as far as county has to strike the rate, the board has to strike the rate, and this stuff.
Okay, but the board has already struck the rate, or no? I believe they did, I thought.
I don't know.
You don't know, okay. So, what is, what is a complete streets policy? Because I'm thinking around this issue.
It's just so we could get a couple grants. Most towns have complete streets. It's about being safe for not only cars, but pedestrians, bicycles, et cetera.
Okay, and there's one thing I want to bring up...
Questions, that's, this is three now.
Oh, no, no, I want to bring up a statement about the manager's report, about the, the short-term rentals.
Every mission.
I believe there's either a state statute, or a municipal ordinance, or both, involving senior citizens that live in one-family homes, they're allowed to rent one bedroom, one bedroom only. And I don't remember if it's a state statute, or if it's a local ordinance, or both. No, it doesn't have to be a caretaker. It could be, you could rent it to anybody, as I remember it. But it can only be a senior citizen in a one-family house, and it can only be one bedroom only. So, I think we should look into that, and that might be part of how you want to resolve this issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, Mr. Jurs?
Jurs, nine five Felt Street. Just want to, I read a newspaper article from The Observer just recently. It was about Carney. Carney is doing a study by Negliya Engineering, because they are short of parking spaces in Carney. So, I think we're heading in that direction. The reason I'm bringing that up is because several, within the last several weeks, I've been at the American Legion on Belmont Avenue, and I was like, "Where are you going to park?" Because if they didn't have a couple spots in the parking, I mean, the whole street is taken up. And from what I'm hearing from the neighbors in that neighborhood, that the developer is charging, I don't know if you get a parking spot with your building, or is that for a second vehicle? They're charging them a hundred something dollars for a parking spot. Now, that's, so that answered my question, if it's true, of course, why all these cars are lined up on Belmont Avenue. And not only that, it's spilling over into Happle Street, Geraldine Street, and all over. So, that's something I think you should, we should look at in the future to see if developers are indeed telling you, "We're allowing for so many parking spots." And now here, there's a hundred other cars, because everybody has a second car, that's spilling over into the residential areas. But you might want to look at that article, see what Negliya is doing. They're doing a study right now in Carney about that. And based on the numbers they have, it's just, the numbers don't match for the amount of vehicles. What I would like to see you do, and I've complained about it before, Mark, about the cars parked by stop signs. If we could look, if you just look around town every day, and take those car, illegal cars, park them legally, I'd like to see what's going to be left. No, just wanted to get that. I think, I think, yeah, I hope you could take another look at this, at any future developments, like, say, on Washington Avenue by Motorcycle Mall. Are they charging extra, or is it going to spill out into the neighborhood? I don't, I don't know, I don't have the answers. But from what I'm seeing and reading, it looks like it may be a problem. But one of the things, if you, everybody parks legally in the town, I'd like to see how many parking spots are left. There's one more thing. Fifteen was answered already. Number eight, is Belmont Avenue, I assume that's the C of O, you've given them the final C of O or something like that? And one more question. Number nine, about the cultivation of marijuana, is that the only one we're going to have in town, or are there any more popping up after that? Because if I remember, you said we have four dispensaries allowed.
Four dispensaries, I believe it's unlimited cultivation.
Unlimited? You got to be kidding me. What are we, on drugs? Holy...
You were here for the public...
No, I know, but what got me is, the city of Newark, for dispensing marijuana, they have five wards, and they only have five in the whole city of Newark, and we have four in Bellevue? I mean, I think it's crazy. I think the cultivation is a little obscene. I didn't realize it, I knew there was four. Would you mention it correctly, because I thought it was five?
Up to, I should, let me correct myself. Up to four, we have zero as of right now.
No, no, but we know that ones are coming on Belmont Avenue, that's already being leased, that little building. There's another one here, that's two that I know. But I'm talking about the cultivation. Is there any particular size to these things?
I don't know, if it's a micro, it's twenty-five hundred square feet, I don't know offhand with this one.
I think we're in trouble.
Thank you.
Oh, what would be my answer on the other?
And the ordinance, resolution number eight? The C of O was actually issued on May twenty-seventh. So, a certificate of completion under the redevelopment agreement has probably...
The terms have been passed.
You did ask me, I've been on forty-three years for the avenue, but I have a request, I have a school on six seventeen Washington Avenue, and parking, as everybody's mentioning, is becoming an issue.
Can I, can I just interrupt you one second? We just passed the ordinance on first reading.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that that was done.
So, it was, it's going to be fifteen-minute parking. It was ordinance for introduction, it was the first one. So, next council meeting, we'll have a second reading on that. We have to do it next meeting, because it'll get wiped out July first. Next council meeting, it'll be second reading, public hearing on that. And then after that, you, it's supposed to be forty-five days, but you're probably good to go.
One minute, one.
One. So, you'll be good to go.
All right, well, thank you so much, totally.
I saved the, explained the whole thing.
Yes, I was a little delayed, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just a couple quick things. Mr. Mafuji, sixty-one, confidently. Resolution four, they're talking about redoing William Street. They paid it, I assume. I don't know if they've started yet on the building, on Greenwich and William. If they do, they might be doing William Street.
Yeah, so this is the application, this is the application that goes down to the...
Just an application, I'm doing work.
It's the application to redo that, that the funding won't be available until twenty twenty-three, and similar to, similar to us tonight, doing seventeen street, some of that money goes back to twenty-one. So, there's anywhere from a year to two years from the time the applications.
Oh, all right, thank you. Of course, again, I have my favorite... On number nine, is it a row only, or is it...
Nine, is it called preservation?
Preservation row.
Row. Row. I have to get back to what we're saying about the trees. Between my sidewalk and the curb is a couple of feet. Those trees are my responsibility.
It's always been that way.
We weren't allowed to touch them.
So when I say your responsibility, what I'm talking about, and I should have clarified, if for some reason that tree, the roots raises the sidewalk, it's not the town's responsibility, even though I believe it's unfair. It's not the town's responsibility to replace the sidewalk. It's the homeowners because the tree is our tree, but it's yours, it's in your yard. I mean trimming the roots, not the tree. Trimming, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, trim the roots, not the tree.
No, branches, we're not allowed to touch them. Also, I was gonna bring up, Phil's, the permits to cut down a tree.
I agree, we should definitely eliminate that.
You should eliminate it because people are doing it left and right. I'm sure they're not getting permits where they should.
Maybe for July.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47th Flight Street. In regard to resolution number nine, which is this cannabis cultivation facility, its location is 61-65 Greylock Avenue, which is in the Valley section of Belville. Currently at that site is the DL Paving Company. They keep their equipment there. But the real concern here, I'm not gonna say anything about my support objections to recreational marijuana use, et cetera, for each his own as far as I'm concerned. My concern here is that this facility is neighboring, essentially a budding, school number nine. So you're putting a cultivation center essentially right next door to school number nine. In fact, the Board of Ed just purchased two properties on Ralph Street, which, if you look at Google Earth, the separation from school number nine, the building, to where the warehouse or the warehouses for the DL Paving Company, which I assume is gonna be the cultivation center, it's only 350 feet.
That's not true, actually.
That's not true. I'll sit down with you publicly.
I did it this morning.
It's 300, it's about 350 feet.
649 feet.
No way. It's 350 feet.
School, that park is municipal. You might be using the park.
No, no, I'm using Google Earth, the distance from the building itself. If you use the linear tool...
I have a picture on my phone, I can show it to you.
All right, well, if you let me back on your Facebook page, which you still are literally banning me from it, I'll have that discussion with you, a polite discussion where we'll do our own...
We'll need the picture, I'll have the picture.
Well, all right, well, I'll do it on my own Facebook page and show everyone that it's actually 350 feet. But who cares if it's 350 feet or 600 feet? The fact of the matter is, you're putting a cultivation center right next to school number nine. There have been issues in the state in the last year. There was, I think it was Middletown, New Jersey. They had a cultivation center put into a former Kmart. There was a huge amount of pollution being generated by, it was making the residents in the area, even a quarter mile, half mile away, nauseous. The residents said it smelled like skunk odor. It was so bad. So the owner said, oh, well, we didn't have all the proper equipment in. We weren't fully complying with OSHA standards, but we were gonna get... But accidents happen. There's still going to be FUs from this building wafting over the children at school number nine. How irresponsible is it for a governing body to say, hey, money is more important to us, our tax revenues are more important than the welfare of the children? If you're going to put a cultivation center and put it elsewhere in Belville with a sufficient distance between that cultivation center and the children? I mean, you, I can't believe...
Our ordinance does dictate a certain amount. That ordinance was passed by the council, that ordinance went through public hearing. And this does subscribe to those distances.
Yeah, but you still have the ultimate say whether or not you can allow a facility to go into a particular location.
If they conform, I don't, I don't know if we can, actually. They can form to the zone, they can form...
Maybe Mr. Martino can weigh in on this matter. But I think it is grossly irresponsible to allow a cultivation center to go in next door to one of our schools.
Not next door.
It is next door. It is a special, that's a whole new story. It is...
A parallel street, actually. It's not even like...
All right, well, I'm trying to reclaim some of my time here. At the beginning of the meeting, you talked about a letter you had gotten from the DCA informing you that you may and your colleagues may be fined for the lateness, the delay in introducing the budget. You've gone through this...
That's not what the letter says. The letter says we did not introduce, which was inaccurate. We did introduce.
You introduced the budget, but grossly beyond the deadline.
That's not, that's not what the letter says. The letter says that we didn't submit it to them. We did introduce...
Six of one, half a dozen on the other.
No, the facts matter.
No, the fact is, you guys introduced, Melon.
We did introduce and it was not sent down to the state.
You were required under state law to introduce the budget by March 31st or the first meeting thereafter.
Absolutely correct.
Right, which in our case was April 12th. You didn't introduce it any ago.
Missed it by two meetings.
You missed it, yeah, by two meetings, but you didn't introduce it until the end of May. So you were, there were statutory, statutory...
Two meetings later.
And violation of the deadline.
Yes.
And there is, if I remember the details correctly, for each day delay, council members can be fined $25 per day each for each day of delay.
Thank you. I do need you to wrap up.
I will, I will in a second. There was a, mentioned a few moments ago about the, or why was it the school tax was being deferred? And I think Mr. Ryakono said that the Board of Ed hasn't yet given, submitted their rates. Now, I find that...
They did not say.
What exactly, what did you say?
Six of one, I don't know.
The Board of Ed approved its budget in its April meeting. You don't know it? Then why isn't Mr. Palladino sending you that information right after?
Your time is up. I do need you to wrap up.
Oh, you interrupted me, sorry.
I do, I have a little time.
Lastly, there's been some discussion about the tree situation. Marie Burke, over the last several years, has repeatedly tried to get a shade tree commission underway. And there usually seems to be support for this.
I've actually been here for four years and I've never seen an ordinance or I've never even seen that on discussion for a work session. Ms. Burke?
Well, you have repeatedly asked in all the previous years. I've been faithful to these meetings for the better part of the last 15 years. Marie has regularly tried to get a shade tree commission underway.
She's a councilwoman. She could put up an ordinance.
Well, I would like to see that happen.
Speak to her, yeah.
I am. I'm through the chair, I'm asking Marie to once again make the effort to try to get a shade tree commission. My street in particular, Floyd Street.
I do need you to wrap up. You're way ahead of time now.
2007, all the new trees were planted in 2008. Since that time, there has not been one effort to trim trees at all. Trees are grossly now overgrown, they're hitting houses. Sidewalks are being lifted. There's no one car in the town to do basic maintenance.
I agree.
So please, please try to get the shade tree commission underway. I think almost every other community...
It can just sort of, mission doesn't cut trees. We have to then hire a bunch of people and equipment.
Well, then you move towards that end, but it would be, you want to, you want a better Belville.
You will support that, I guess.
I would, I would certainly support it. Something needs to be done to keep our trees in healthy condition. And we're just allowing, we're ignoring them altogether and it's gonna lead to some really serious problems.
I do need you to wrap up. You're way ahead of your time, thank you. Anybody else?
Quick question. What's holding up the budget and when do you plan on passing it?
Nothing is holding up the budget. If you just heard us talk about most of the night, we actually reduced the budget two meetings ago. That budget has now been transmitted to state. The state reviews it, gets back to us. The second they get back to us, we can approve fine by law. I'm just saying a motion to close, Republican.
Yeah, so moved.
Motion to close. Just to close. All right, we have a motion made in second to close. Clerk, call her up.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
Petanion.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Trumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes. Consent agenda. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, we're gonna do a particular later. Okay, consent agenda. I have 10, 11, 12, please. Hold.
I have seven and nine, please.
Seven, nine. Anybody else? Going once? Going twice? I will entertain a motion to move the consent agenda with the exceptions of seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12. So moved. We have, we have a motion made and seconded. So clerk, call the roll to approve the consent agenda, please.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
Petanion.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Trumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes. Where's motion number seven?
On seven, I just want a clarification, just to kind of explain what that revocable. I know, I think they requested that, a revocable. Because I've never seen one. Yes, so it's basically, it's the end of that street, which is not, I mean, a street. It's not even used. Right. And it was either that or an easement.